This episode of Southeast Iowa Today is brought to you by Grinder Auto Body of Washington, Iowa. Using state-of-the-art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa. No matter who Frankenstein it, they can fix it, clean it, and customize it. McDonald Boneyard of Kyoto, Iowa. For all your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. For great food, it's your choice. Your Choice Family Restaurant of Wayland, Iowa. Open Tuesday through Sunday. Come to our Cruze Inns this summer on the second Tuesday of the month, June through September. Gerling Repair of Winfield, Iowa. If your mower is dead, call Fred, your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Gravely dealer. Fred also fixes and sells snow blowers. B&amp;B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. CW Tree Trimming LLC. We're into your trees, not your wallet. Serving all of Henry County and the surrounding area, we offer a senior citizen and veteran discount. Dutch Market and Coffee Talk of Washington, Iowa. Dutch Market can handle all of your grocery needs, and they even have a conference room that you can use for free. Coffee Talk's drive-thru is open and ready to serve you coffee, energy drinks, sandwiches, baked goods, and ice cream. They all present you the award-winning Southeast Iowa Today. Here's the author of Christie's Journey, The Beat Goes On, and your host, John Bain.
Thank you announcer Cody Roy of NewEnglandDukes.com for your golden pipes and wonderful introduction. Today is June 30th, 2025. The Mount Pleasant Community School District Board is having a special work session tonight. On the agenda is demographic data and future planning needs. Let's get right to it.
All right, next we will call this meeting to order. Jessica, Lynn, here.
Mullen.
Here.
Overbur.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Hampton.
Here.
Monner.
Here.
Kika.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda?
So.
Second. Off second. Roca?
Lynn?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Overbur?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Monner?
Yes.
Kika?
Yes.
In our new business, we have a couple of action items. The first one is tickets, like consideration to approve 25, 26 milk bids.
Okay, so you've got that in your packet, I'll just pull it up here. We, we had, we went out and requested proposals from three different vendors. Prairie Farms, Anderson Erickson, and Country View Dairy. The bid that I would recommend to you, the 1% white for Anderson Erickson, 33.8 cents. Prairie Farms at 37. That's what we used the most of. And then the chocolate would be next, significantly lower. There was just a bit lower from Prairie Farms on the skim white, but I would recommend for the 25, 26 school year that we, that you approve Anderson Erickson as the milk provider.
Any questions?
Are there changes at Lincoln next year for milk? I'd heard that they weren't doing milk for snack time. Do we know how that's going to affect overall costs for the district?
That snack milk was, wasn't, was, had to be fully paid for, right? So it wasn't a...
That has no variance on the two of them.
Anything else? Motion to approve Anderson Erickson?
So.
Second?
Second.
Roca?
Lynn?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Overbur?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Monner?
Yes.
Kika?
Yes.
Next, we have consideration to approve legal counsel, contest of this waiver.
Okay, so this has to do specifically with a request from New London Community School District to access our homeschool assistance program through a 28E agreement. We went over this in the policy committee earlier in the month. We have asked Allers, Allers Law Incorporated, who is our legal counsel, to put together a 28E agreement for that relationship. And Allers represents both, represents both Mount Pleasant Community School District and New London Community School District. So they require a waiver for them to consider reviewing, drawing up a 28E agreement for that matter. So I would recommend that you approve the 28, or excuse me, the waiver, the legal counsel waiver.
Question number eight. Do we know how many students are going to be a part of this from their district?
Uh, no, no. They, they're, what happens is, and the reason that we would enter into an agreement like this is, a number of area districts that do not have a homeschool assistance program, they open enroll, dual enroll into our district to access the program. Once they hit seventh grade and they start to be involved in activities, sports in particular, but activities in general, they, they unenroll from our school district and then they, basically they homeschool independently because the districts that we're talking about here, or New London is the only one who is asked right now, but we've had inquiry from others, but they just homeschool independently because they can't be involved in, they can't be enrolled in two, two school districts at the same time. So they just go independently, they, they, they enroll into their local district for the, the activity program. What this, what this will allow them to do, once we get the 28E in place, which you guys would, would review as well, it would allow them to access our programming as they currently are. They would, they would continue to pay our district for access to the program, but then they can actually be enrolled in their school district for activities. There's a number of districts that have this in place, good Prairie being one. They, they have a number of districts that, that use a 28E for access to their homeschool programs. This is just, what you're doing tonight is just approving the waiver so that our legal counsel can put the 28E together and then you guys can review it.
I think Kara Lynn was, I think, I think she mentioned Elizabeth White-Fayman. Any other questions? Motion to approve, what legal counsel? I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Roca?
Lynn?
Yes.
Mullen?
Yes.
Overbur?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Hampton?
Yes.
Monner?
Yes.
Kika?
Yes.
Moving on to our work session items, the first thing up is central office and homeschool assistance.
Okay, so what, what I wanted to have as a, as a work session item and as a discussion item then, was to have some discussion on where we're currently at with our central office planning, with our homeschool assistance planning. If you remember, as, as part of the master plan, and even prior to the master plan, we, we had made some, we put together some plans for moving from our current leased facilities, central office, the, the first floor of the building that we're currently in, and moving central office to the first floor of the activity center with remodeling on central campus. And moving the homeschool assistance program to the, the lower level of the chapel. So you've got in your packet, and this was posted as well, these, these were preliminary plans for central office on that lower level, the, the main entrance being on the east end of the, on the northeast end of the activity center, and a remodel for reception, the conference room and offices going to the west. So these are, I'm, I'm, I'm not here tonight, I mean, this is not so much about talking about the specifics of the plan themselves. This is about just, just taking, just gauging where we are at with potentially moving those offices, getting out of the leased space and into these, into, you know, doing the remodel and, and moving. The, the process of this would include the architect putting together drawings that, that eventually, you know, would be bid documents. So you could go, you could take those documents, go out for bids. It'd be a sealed, sealed bid process. You would get bids, you could look at those bids and, and, you know, really come up with, okay, this is a specific cost on this, this is what we have bid. I did talk to our attorney last week, going through that process, because as, and again, I wanted to have, I'm going to let you guys, we can talk about it a bit, but I, I, I wanted to, I wanted to have that information from our attorney. She said it's perfectly acceptable, if you wanted to do that, to go through that process, to get bid documents, to get specific, specific dollar figures, to get bids on that, and make a decision from that point, at, at that point, on whether you want to move forward. There is some timing involved if, if the district wanted to, you know, be in those offices a year from now. So you would need to get, you know, bid documents, drawings put together, and, and get the project bid, and if you like the bid, you know, I would say in December, November, December, January, you're bidding at, at that time, and then construction can begin in, in late winter and then into the summer so that, that the move is going to be made next, next summer. So I thought it important that we just talk a bit, a bit about that, you know, gauging where, where we're at. Where you're at is important.
So John wants the cost to get the drawings from our, to start?
Um, that's a good question. I don't have it, I don't have that. I would just say, and I can get it for you, on, on what that would cost to put the bid documents together. A lot of this work obviously, you know, has, the preliminary work has been done as part of master planning, so some of that would, would take less time and more work. So, but I can definitely get you...
What was our cost for the RTM?
The architect cost? Yeah. I'm, I'm going to say $80,000. But I, I can, I can...
Well, that's a big one. How about that?
So would that cost be like a percentage of the project, or the architect would, wouldn't the architect just give us a, a bid?
Generally, I mean, generally, what my, my experience has been, what they'll do is they'll, you know, they'll draw it up, the estimated cost of the project, and then it's a percentage of that. So I can, I can definitely find that if you want to.
So where do they get the ideas of how, does it come from the board, or are you John to, to how it's going to be designed?
I mean, you kind of need the specifications for everything, right? So like Chad Fanning House would work, work closely with them.
Number of offices, people housed, number of offices, conference rooms, and storage spaces needed.
So the main reason to move is because we're paying rent and we own the building?
One of the things is to get out of all of the stuff that we don't own.
Reduce yearly costs.
So we're paying rent, yeah. If I look at the notes right, $43,680. Is that correct?
So I looked it up, and I have $46,380. $46,000 is what we approved a couple months ago. So yeah, a little less than $50,000.
Since, so what was the amount that we had paid for rent there? Eight or nine years have we paid there?
$338,150.
338.
One five zero.
So if we go into what's estimated, we're at $825,000.
The previous, yes, this, that was with loaded costs. The previous estimate, when we looked at it before this piece, was about $200, $200 a square foot, and there was 3,300 square feet. So at one point, we were looking at around $660,000. So we, there's lots of numbers going around, so the due diligence that Mike and Linda did with some rent, what was reasonable for renovation costs of other places in town that had done renovation costs, 200 was right in that ballpark, because that's about $204 a square foot, but why is it put into the care center, the child home center? So there, there is a range there, so I, that's one of the things we, what is that cost?
Right. And to move forward, if we would, we have this money in the bank?
We still do have cash.
Yeah, yeah, we would use, we would use our, our penny sales tax dollars for, for all aspects of this.
And if it's in the bank, does that draw an interest?
Yes.
What percent?
Um, it is, I'll have to get you a actual number.
Just rough ballpark.
I'll look at our bank statement. I'd want to say four, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
So actually, if you take 800,004 percent, $33,000, $32,000, we're only paying $12,000 for rent. Take your interest and put it toward the rent, so it's actually not that high of a cost of rent.
So when we approved the summer maintenance projects, it was $1.28 million is what, what we approved. In part of that budget was $450,000, not that full $200 a square foot like we're talking about for, well, it was for Wisdom Quest construction. And we're not doing $450,000 of Wisdom Quest construction. It left us with a balance of almost $3 million. So I think that's, that $3 million balance is kind of where we're getting that much, you know, interest from. That's a substantial balance to be carrying when it's the penny sales tax that's meant to provide, you know, facilities for, for schools. The next step for all of this would be to get, get bid documents from an architect, and we still don't have to approve it. If it's, if it's too high, you know, it still takes the final board approval before we would move forward with this. Again, it's not on, yeah, I'm, I'm limited that.
I could definitely, I, I can get, I can get a cost for it. I, I can get a general cost from, from, from the architect, the architect to, to ask and just ask what's, what, what's going to be the cost to draw this up and get bid documents ready?
That was going to be one of my questions to, to have you ask.
Yeah. John, I think you said today on the radio that we've been ready for, what, 30 years? Well, yeah, so I, I did, so, again, this is just from, from, from my history, right? So I came in, I came to the district in 1996 for the first time, the first time, and, and we were leasing, renting central office space at that time. I don't know for how long prior to that, the district was leasing prior to 1996, but I can tell you for sure, it's been 1996 till now, you know, in a number of different places. So, so yeah, that's, that's where I got that 30-year. Just for interest, do we have any idea how much we have spent on rent since 1996? Yeah, I, I don't know what, we were, you know, again, in 1996, we were in the TDNT building. After that, we were, we, we moved to the basement of US Bank for a time. We were actually out here at high school for a short time while some space was getting ready. And then ultimately, you know, they moved for, I don't know, 10, 12 years to the, where the city offices are now on that second floor, rented space there for, as I said, 10 or 12 years until the city decided they wanted that space. And then that's, that's then when we moved to the, to the facilities that we're currently in. This will be year number 10, coming, coming up will be year number 10 that we've been here. Do you know of ballpark, the square footage of this, the leasing space that we have there? I, I, I guess I should have been more prepared. I, I do have all of that. I can get that for you.
I think it's less than 3,300.
Carl is here, since we're in a work session. You know what the square footage is, just off the end of the floor?
Uh, this is package deal, what we're talking about. At least put them up, they're on the full distance, or we do have full distance again.
And that's tied together, but our lease for the current space includes both of them? But they don't need to be together?
If we wanted to, we could still renovate the chapel and have homeschool assistance start there in the fall.
Well, we're, we, we have a, we, we signed a, been board-approved, a one-year lease, starting this August, August 1st to next August.
You're talking fall '26.
Correct.
We're paying for this space.
We're paying for it as that, we really wanted to. Insurance-wise, we can get someone in that building.
Yeah, nothing that ties the two together?
Something was said a week ago Sunday in that meeting about other offices over there, which I didn't know. What are they like? We're talking the chapel, and then somebody said about Old Main.
The first floor of Old Main, we did, Canco looked at it, there is extensive, more than $200 a square foot required to remodel that. We did, we do have, had some estimate, there are some limitations with that building and its age and the amount of remodel that would, that when we looked at it the first time.
There was a, their, their big, their biggest concern and biggest ticket item was the service, the electrical service to the building.
And similarly, I know I was part of the discussion, but let's walk back and kind of revisit why we didn't think the chapel offices would fit for central office, but would for homeschool assistance.
I think the minimal work, obviously, that needed to be done to house homeschool assistance was far less than, than, I don't know, did they have, do we have all of like conference room space available if we were going to move to the basement?
Um, I mean, the, the conversation that I remember at the time as well was, was those issues, it was, there were issues of how do you, how do you keep things secure? How do you keep it secure down in there? The way that that is set up with the, with the stairs and the counter. So central office documents, those kinds of, you know, security things, how do we make sure that that was, was secure? So that was, you know, we, we didn't go that direction for that reason.
And H7 did ask those questions as well, and they have, the plan would include a secure room, that their documents that they have would be, you're not talking about the number or size of documents that, relative to central office needs.
Right, I think homeschool assistance could lock up individual doors for security, and that's what it really comes down to me is, with that tentative floor plan for central office, there's a secured, you know, entry point that everybody would have to be, be buzzed in and out of, that's on the north, northeast side of the activity center. There'd be double doors, which maybe the second set isn't factored in there. You'd have to go to the reception area first, you can't just go down, you know, another hallway and have access to more of the building. So security is one of my biggest for, for this location.
Do we have that now in our current space?
No.
I guess for me, I'd be curious to know what it would take to retrofit the chapel offices for central offices. Again, I know that it takes money to draft up these plans, and I guess while you're asking what it would take for them to draw plans for how renovation, similarly, you know, what would it cost to also run bid documents for chapel? I just, to get to a point where we know cost-wise, if we could put everything we needed, security-wise, you know, whatever is needed for central office in chapel, is it drastically cheaper than renovating now? And I'm not trying to, you know, reopen past discussions, I'm just trying to get more than one option for costs for us to be able to deliberate. Yes, once we get bid documents for the how, we would be able to make a decision, but if I don't have anything to compare it to for other options, it's hard to say we've done our due diligence to make sure we're, you know, picking the right fit financially for the district.
So there with that, like my mind kind of goes, the chapel is set up for offices, so even though we're looking at 4,000 square feet, we're not renovating all 4,000 square feet of the chapel, correct? It's kind of, or, and the how, like we're renovating all that square footage at $200-ish a square foot, right? So that's where we get to our 800. Is there a potential number, and I, I don't even know how to ask this besides going down the line of, it's just too much, or, you know, X number of dollars makes sense, and let's kind of go, go with it at that point. Maybe 800's too much, because if we get down to 400, is that good enough? If we get down to 200, is that good enough? At what point do we say, do we as a board, say, we collectively say, yes, we're going to put that much money into central office?
I see what you're saying. For me, it's, this becomes part of the master planning process, right? To me, it's not a standalone issue to be decided on its own. Part of me liked when it was thrown around as an option to be included in the bond referendum, because then we allowed it to be set to a vote. Without having the rest of these discussions to figure out what other priorities in the district, I don't have a good frame of reference to answer that question, how much is too much? You know, if we are moving forward with just maintaining the status quo as far as number of elementary buildings, you know... number of elementary buildings, um, you know, just continuing to approve one million dollars at a time for Band-Aids for the district, if there's no other glaring priority that we could be spending any sales tax monies on other facility needs, then that opens up, in my opinion, a, a larger number that's okay to spend on this project. So, I'm not trying to stonewall this discussion, but I think that it's not fair to solely decide on cost of this project without knowing what other projects in the district we could be making to maintain the master plan process.
I've felt the same way as you the last several days with this narrative, it kind of goes back to that master plan, in my opinion. If we have eight hundred thousand to throw around, central office really the place we want to throw it right now. I know long-term, we want to be out of there, but if we're not going to be able to get a, a bond referendum completed, maybe that master, that eight hundred thousand needs to be spent on other things and class, you know, classrooms.
Josh, I've been looking at it, like you thinking about it over the few days, and I kind of put it back into the business sense, payback in five years. So if you can spend two hundred and fifty thousand and get moved over there, I'm for it. But if you can't pay back in five years, it's not a good business sense. I mean, that's kind of, you know, some things won't take longer to pay off, but, uh, if you're paying roughly fifty thousand a year, five-year payback, two hundred and fifty thousand, I guess that's my thing, is if you haven't come in there to do the drawings, you know, what can you do for two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand? You know, where are we at?
I disagree with you, Mark, that when we got that eight hundred thousand dollar number several months ago, all in cap, that's, that's how many years of rent, right? At this point, that's...
I think that's what we're trying to get to, is what is the number?
Yeah.
And, and my, you know, what, what I'll do is, is, uh, uh, I'll, I will ask the architects, what do you think it would cost to, uh, and, and they can, I mean, they can give us, they can give us estimates as well as when, if, you know, when you go into, um, the, the whole process, they, they have to give estimated cost of the project. What, where, where I think, um, we've, we've tried to, um, as Angie said, you know, we've, we've kind of been, uh, uh, in a lot of different places with, um, this, with master planning and projects, and we were talking about this particular project, uh, well, do we have HVAC on it? Do we not have HVAC? Well, now, that rooftop unit project is, is going, it's going to be completed, is that making, is that going to make a difference in the overall cost of this? So, I, I, you know, I think, I thought that's what we were looking for, was some kind of a cost, a refresher, a renewed, uh, look at what the cost, uh, is going to be, so, I imagine more information, uh, definitely on that, um, and, and the cost to come up with that as well.
I think they're all getting to that same point. Uh, I'll agree with Josh's point that when we were given that number, I don't think any one of us was like, heck yeah, that's good to me, I mean, it, it, we've had several moments of sticker shock, like we've said over this process. So, I guess that we kind of have a top endpoint to where we know what causes everybody's job to drop, so, yeah, are there other factors that have taken place since then that provides a lower estimate? I, I think that's what we're trying to find out.
Well, I think you gotta remember the survey and what the public said, how many didn't agree with moving over there? I mean, you spend the eight hundred thousand and move... And Eric, you brought up about security, you know, about that. What about our elementary schools?
That's the next point that I was getting, it's not an agenda item.
I understand.
We're talking about the central office.
Yeah.
So I stopped myself.
Okay, that's fine.
The next thing that, as we're talking about all this with master planning, would be, you know, secure entries at the elementary schools, possible, you know, cafeteria addition of Van Allen, that I thought that was getting too far down the road for, for this conversation, because with that four million dollars, uh, three, three million dollars that I brought up earlier, if that gives us a substantial down payment on getting some other projects started, um, that would be along those lines for, for student needs, that would be directly, you know, impacting the students. Now, the master planning, uh, costs that we got from that, that's not enough money, so then we'd be talking about, about revenue bonds for that, but this gives us some substantial, you know, down payment for it, and it's a long-term asset. You know, if we remodel office space, it, it is office space, it's important, it's what all the payroll from the district goes through, it's where fam, families come to get their businesses, uh, taken care of with the district, it is very important. That's a long-term asset that you would have to divide over mi- many years, and then that is the payback, we wouldn't be paying rent after whatever amount of years we decide we're comfortable with.
Those comments lead into really our next section item, which is why we pulled all the rest of the data and why we need to talk about what does the next three to five years look like as far as enrollment, and where should, where should we be spending the funds that we have, and where do we need to be watching for costs as well? So, that's why we pretty much took everything down to, let's look at what's in front of us, because we can't make these decisions, right, on, without seeing the big picture. We're talking, we've been paying rent, but I think you have, do you have, is the board happy with where we're at on the discussion? Obviously, we're not moving forward with anything, but we would, we need some more information on what, what would have been, been packaged for blank and how much would that cost? Is that clear? Hit with that?
Yes.
So we can move on to I N B?
Yes.
Demographic data and future planning data.
So, um, I wanted to, to try and, uh, this, this Angie mentioned, uh, get a big picture of where we're at as a district, of, uh, demographically, southeast Iowa, um, and, and just general enrollment trends, um, in the state of Iowa. So you have this, um, document in your packet, I want to just go through and just try and, just kind of, uh, you bring some focus to where we're currently at and, and, uh, what the future looks like, um, enrollment-wise for our district. So, if you would permit me, um, these, these are excerpts from the Department of Education, uh, website on enrollment trends in Iowa, uh, recent trends, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, so overall, public school enrollment saw a decline of just over three thousand students in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year compared to the previous year. This continues a trend of decreasing enrollment in public schools since twenty-twenty-two. In twenty-four, twenty-five, two hundred and seven out of three hundred and twenty-five districts experienced a decrease in enrollment, while a hundred and eighteen saw an increase. This decline is also evident when looking back to two, two thousand sixteen, with some districts experiencing steeper declines than others. Certified enrollment for twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, used for determining funding was four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five point four, the lowest since twenty-fourteen. So what are the factors? What are factors influencing, uh, enrollment in Iowa? One is birth rates, lower birth rates, uh, contribute to the decrease in the student population. Education savings accounts, increased attendance at private schools for the use of ESAs, uh, often referred to as vouchers, affects public school enrollment. In twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six students used ESAs to attend private schools. Open enrollment affects, uh, district enrollment, allows students to attend public schools outside of their resident district, potentially leading to enrollment shifts between districts. And then general demographic changes, changes in population distribution, uh, in fact, enroll, affect enrollment, um, with some areas seeing growth, uh, the central Iowa metro area, corridor, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, and others seeing declines. And then migration trends, shifting populations affect where students are enrolled. What are some of those estimated impacts? One is funding, decreasing enrollment can impact, uh, school district funding, as a large portion of the funding is allocated, uh, per student. At two percent SSA, uh, this, this current school year that we're going into, fiscal year twenty-six, more than half of the school districts in Iowa are on the, uh, the school budget, uh, one hundred and one percent guaranteed. That means over half the school districts in Iowa will receive, um, less funding than they had the previous year, but you, but they're guaranteed that one percent, that additional one percent, um, and so you, you can make that up in local property taxes, uh, but over half the districts are going to have to do that at two percent, two percent SSA. Um, resource allocation, school districts with declining enrollment may face decisions about consolidating programs, facilities, and services. Other, other effects, school closures, declining enrollment in some areas could lead to school closures. And then rural districts, rural districts have been particularly affected by declining enrollment, although the report suggests they saw some of the largest increases in per student spending between twenty-fifteen and twenty-nineteen. Some of the projections for twenty-five, twenty-six, public school enrollment is expected to decrease by about ten thousand students, while private school enrollment is expected to rise by approximately two thousand students. The use of, uh, ESAs, um, the education savings account is expected to increase further as income restrictions are lifted, so this will be the third year of ESAs, um, and, and it was phased in with income restriction, restrictions, those are now lifted, uh, for the next year. And I just note that this information is, is reflects certified enrollment data, it's a snapshot in time for funding purposes. So let's, let's look a bit at, um, some of the demographics in our area. This is Iowa County population and percentage change. So all of this information, um, you can access, uh, on the, at the, it's called the Iowa State Data Center, if you just Google Iowa State Data Center, um, it's a, um, it is a state, uh, state of Iowa, uh, website, but the Iowa County population, uh, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three, right now, they don't have any newer data in twenty-twenty-three, you can go back further, uh, than, than April twenty-twenty, um, but I want to come down here and just take a look at Henry County. The overall population, uh, in Henry County, uh, during that period, uh, was, it decreased four point six percent in Henry County, uh, with a total population then, uh, in the county of nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-seven. Now, I, I looked and looked at that map, and, and I did not see a larger increase, uh, or excuse me, a larger decrease, uh, by county, um, in, in any of the ninety-nine counties in Iowa. The closest, and again, maybe I missed something, the closest I could find was Adams County at four point three, um, four point three percent decrease. So the, the idea, again, in looking at these different demographics is what, what does the future look like, uh, for our school district in terms of, um, enrollment? So the other thing that I want, uh, or one of the other things that I want to look at is, uh, this is five-year-old population by county, and why would this be important? Well, it, you're, generally, your five-year-olds are going to be your kindergarten classes in that year. When those kids are five years old, that's generally going to be, uh, your, your kindergarten class, right? So, uh, now, this is, this is by county, okay? So this is, this is not just Mount Pleasant, uh, this is, uh, any of the, uh, the, uh, this is the, the entirety of our county, uh, the number of five-year-olds. So you can see Henry County is in the blue on this first line, uh, back in twenty-twenty, uh, the number of five-year-olds is two hundred and thirty-eight for the county, and then you can see the, see the shift there, um, to twenty-twenty, and they did add one data point on this, um, recently. So this is twenty-twenty-four, five-year-olds, two hundred and fourteen. Uh, I polled Jefferson County because we, uh, because it's regional, uh, and we, you know, a small part of Mount Pleasant Community School District is in Jefferson County, so you can see the, the, the trend, uh, with Jefferson County as well. Lee County, uh, is in the purple, again, you have to remember, you know, as you're looking at these numbers, uh, you know, you have, you have several population centers in Lee County, you've got Keokuk, you've got Fort Madison, um, you can see the trend there, and then this last one is Washington. Uh, any questions or comments on that data? So the next thing that I, that I want to look at, again, that, this, this is data from the Iowa State Data Center, um, and this is, I'll go up here, births, deaths, and natural change. So how many births, how many deaths, and, and what, what is that change in, in, uh, population? So in twenty-twenty, and you got it, one thing that you, one of the things on the legend here is blank cells, uh, from two thousand and twelve forward, and I, what I, what I polled was twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. So blank cells from two thousand forward would indicate zero to five occurrences. All right? So in twenty-twenty, I, I highlighted, uh, I highlighted the, I highlighted Mount Pleasant, I also highlighted Hillsborough as well, not because they're part of our school district, they're not, but I did highlight it because, uh, uh, they're close, we have a number of open enrollments from Hillsborough. So this is births, uh, so you would have less than five in, uh, in, so this, again, this is twenty-twenty that we're looking at right here, so these five-year-old, these would, these, these kids would be five years old this year, so this would be our kindergarten group, uh, you know, generally, this year. So, uh, less than five in Hillsborough, uh, eighty-eight in Mount Pleasant, less than five in Rome, less than five in Salem, and you can see the rest of the county, and you can see the, again, the natural change for the county total, and for each of the areas over here. That's twenty-twenty, so that would, repeating myself, that would generally be our kindergarten students this fall. Same thing, if you go to twenty-twenty-one, Mount Pleasant, a hundred and eighty... Mount Pleasant, one-hundred-and-eight births, one-hundred-and-fifty deaths for a natural change of minus forty-two. Less than five in Rome, less than five in Salem. That's twenty-twenty-one, kindergarten class of twenty-twenty-six. Twenty-twenty-two. Mount Pleasant, one-hundred-and-eighteen deaths, one-hundred-and-forty, so a natural change of minus twenty-two. Less than five in Rome, ten in Salem, rest of the county. See the totals at the top there. And this is, twenty-twenty-three is the most recent statistics that they have. Hundred-and-six in Mount Pleasant, one-hundred-and-twenty-seven deaths for a natural change of minus twenty-one. Less than five in Rome, eleven in Salem.
So John, with this data, it's not just the city limits of Mount Pleasant, Salem, Rome?
I'm going to say these are addresses of births.
Postal code, zip, bicep code.
I couldn't find it, I couldn't find it on the site, but I'm going to assume when you fill out a birth certificate, would you put down as an address is what they're using here?
The bottom line is rest of county, so I'm assuming this is countywide.
Like Westwood or those other smaller. There's several other smaller towns, I'll try to figure the names.
Any other questions on that data from the board?
So twenty-twenty, we can kind of look at as our incoming kindergarten or our incoming?
You, you, yes. I mean, you could kind of split the year in half, right? Because if you're born after, if you have an August or later birthday, right? Usually, but, so you could average out the two-year. You're still around ninety-eight. If you average twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, you come up with ninety-eight, right? So the in-town projection, we're at hundred-and-six.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next, the next graphic that you have in your packet, so I'll pull this up here. I did not, I did, I worked on this this morning, and so I did, this was not posted to the site. But this is Mount Pleasant Community School District, served enrollment since, there is that whole thing on there? Served enrollment since fiscal year twenty-fifteen. Served enrollment are, is, as it says, it's the number of kids that we are serving right here in our school district. As, not as opposed to, but the difference, served enrollment is the kids we're serving. Certified enrollment is the count of kids that come from our district that we get funding for. So you might have a certified enrollment that is less than your served enrollment. And it happens in a lot of districts that are heavy, heavy open enrollment, their certified enrollment, you know, a West Burlington, for example, certified enrollment, you know, maybe less than their total of open enrollment, and their served number is a lot bigger than their certified enrollment. So this is served, these are kids that we are serving in our school district, fiscal year fifteen to fiscal year twenty-five. So you can see back in fiscal year fifteen, we were serving in our buildings, two-thousand-and-twenty-one students, and you can just see the trend. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, bit of a bump in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then we did have an increase in fiscal year twenty-five. So again, just the general trend of enrollment, you know, over a ten-year period, seems to match up with some of the other demographic data that we were looking at earlier.
The biggest thing is that it doesn't contradict the other thing, the other information. So far, it all is similar to it.
So the next, the next thing that's in your packet, and this is, I'll just quickly, you can take a look at this. The next thing we're going to look at is certified enrollment and certified enrollment projections. And so this tells you how they do the analysis, and I'm going to go to the next, I'm going to go to the next document and just kind of walk you through how it's done. But this data, this data comes from the Iowa Department of Education, and the, well, the source says it right here, Iowa Department of Education, the Bureau of Performance and Analytics Calculations, using certified enrollment data and live birth data from the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. So this is, those are the two things that they're using when they make these projections, certified enrollment and then live birth data for the kindergarten class. So I'm going to make this bigger, but everything I just told you is, that's what's at the top of this document right here. That's as big as I can make it. So this is actual enrollment versus what the projection was, what the Department of Education was projecting for that next year and beyond. Because they'll project five years out. Every time there's a new year of certified enrollment, they'll project five years out, okay? So what they, what they do, to get this, to get this projection, and I'll just, I'll use some of the numbers right here. So what they would look at is by grade, each grade level, they would say, okay, number of second graders in twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, and how many of those kids are common, the same kids from twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, how many of those same kids make the move from second grade to third grade? And then they take the ratio of that, the percentage of that, and they apply it to the certified enrollment for that year, and then they just project out. If it's, for example, just using easy numbers, if you had a hundred kids in second grade in one year, and then ninety-six of them, those common kids, made the move the following year to third grade, that's ratio, it's ninety-six percent. So then they use that ninety-six, and they apply that to that current year's certified enrollment, and then that's how they get their projection. They do that for each grade level, and then they use live birth data for the kindergarten class. And what's the number of those kids that were born in the county or in the district, and what percentage of those end up going to kindergarten? So that's how they get their enrollments. So what I would have you look at here, in sixteen-seventeen, this was the projection, this was the actual. So the actual is a little bit higher. Seventeen-eighteen, this was the projection, this is the actual. Eighteen-nineteen, this is the projection, this is the actual. Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, this was the projection, this was the actual.
Actual, certified, not served?
Certified, not served. Thanks for pointing that out again. Certified, not served. This is the projection, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Now, if you remember, spring of twenty-twenty is in March, that's when we, that's when COVID shut us down. So then this next year was the, you know, the really strange COVID year. This was the projection, this was the actual. On the DE website, there was no data for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two on a projection. They didn't have any data on that. That was our actual certified enrollment, eighteen-hundred, eighteen-hundred-and-thirty. Twenty-two, twenty-three, this is the projection, that's the actual. Same thing in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, they did not have data on a projection, and that was our actual certified enrollment. Seventeen-thirty-three. Twenty-four, twenty-five, the projection was seventeen-oh-nine, and we certified last October, seventeen-fifty-seven. So again, now, what they're doing on these next projections, twenty-five, twenty-six, all the way out to twenty-nine, thirty, they're looking at common kids, how many, what's the percentage of kids that are making the jump from the current grade level, that made the jump, from the previous grade level to the current grade level, they're applying that to the grade level of the certified year, and then projecting out from there. So you can see the projections, twenty-five, twenty-six, seventeen-oh-two, sixteen-fifty, sixteen-twenty-six, fifteen-sixty-seven, and what they have projected for twenty-nine, thirty, is fifteen-twenty-three. Now, I, you know, I would not put all of my eggs in the basket on the projection. You do have a year here where there was a bump, but I would say, again, the trend has been actual enrollment that is lower than what was projected. Any questions on that from the board? This is enrollment data, this is served enrollment data. I'll make each one of these bigger, but just what we're looking at here. This is by elementary building, this is served enrollment data, ten years, well, eleven years' worth of data from twenty-fourteen, the number of students served. So this, up to twenty-twenty-four, this would be the neighborhood school model, all buildings K to five, prior to the Great Lake transition. So you can see Lincoln Elementary, number of kids, again, K to five, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and twenty-twenty-four. Salem Elementary, starting in twenty-fourteen. And now, I did include twenty-twenty-five here because Salem stayed K five. Well, I have a great light look for, in the next document as well. But I, you know, just watching the trends is what I hope you're doing.
John, what happened in two thousand and eighteen? Because the three elementaries in town, that's where it all plummeted. Salem was two thousand and twenty. I mean, if you look at it, it's two thousand and eighteen. They kind of peaked in all three of them.
Yeah, I have an answer for you. And I don't know.
No, I don't.
Yeah? Harlan? You can see Van Allen, served enrollment. And again, this is without preschool. We didn't, I didn't include preschool in these numbers. And I, what I do remember about this time, or about these years, were the years of Van Allen with twenty-five and twenty-six kids in a section, and then you can see the, again, the trend there.
One thing I was trying to remember, when I worked at Harlan, that housing market decline was, really hit us, and we cut our workforce from almost seven hundred down to less than two hundred. And that happened at the end of twenty-nineteen. So I was trying to figure out, were there other manufacturers that did a workforce reduction, and was it in that timeframe when the housing market plummeted, and what else did that affect? Because I know a large portion, like West Lane Closing, has a lot to do with some of those bigger changes, so I think we would have to probably ask Rachel on some of that information. That could tie with some of these is what employers in town reduced staff or shut down.
Where is that document? Our graph? Well, I think I have it in here. No, that's, no. I don't, I apologize, because I don't have this document. Board members, you have it. What's that? Is it on there? I don't, I don't think it's on there. You have it? Certified enrollment, Great Lake model.
So where are you? Elementary?
No, we just, yeah, we just did that. Trying to think of where that would be so I can... Yeah? It is on somewhere.
It's the second.
Oh, 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 it's the same document. Okay, let's see if I don't have it. Thank you very much. I just need to scroll. Sorry about that, everybody. So this is, again, this is served enrollment in the Great Lake model, so last year, and then what the projected enrollment is for the fall of twenty-five. So for the projected enrollment in twenty-five, I just, I used... So for the projected enrollment in twenty-five, I just, I used, uh, I used our served enrollment at the end of March, in the third quarter. That's, so that's where I got that data, okay? So Harlan, you can see that's, Harlan's preschool and kindergarten.
Preschoolers count as half a student.
Point five, point five. Okay? Current, projected. Lincoln. Current and projected. Van Allen's grades three, four, five, current and projected. And Salem, current and projected.
And with that, uh, there is, there was a section added back to Lincoln for the fall and a section taken away from Van Allen. So the second graders had five sections. That's five sections, second grade followed into third grade.
Right.
But the third, incoming first graders have six sections.
So, uh, total served enrollment, spring of twenty-five, eight hundred and fifteen point five, and then projected enrollment of seven hundred and ninety. Let's see, totals then, uh, this is the next document. Again, I, I guess what I'm, not I guess, what I'm wanting, what I'm, what I'm, what we need to be considering is the trends, the trends in enrollment, the projections in enrollment. And, uh, what as a district then, uh, what, what does that mean for us? Grade level projections, this is grade level projections for twenty-five, twenty-six. Kind of looked at that, but, but, uh, these are just, these are the, uh, the totals. In Mount Pleasant, a hundred in kindergarten, nine in Salem, uh, and these are the grade levels. Cross there.
The difference in the seven ninety and that total seven forty-seven is the preschool.
Preschool, this, this does not include preschool. Um, and then the, the next document is kindergarten enrollment. Some historical data, kindergarten enrollment, twenty-one, twenty-two in Mount Pleasant, Salem. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four. And then the last with the asterisk is kindergarten roundup, registration numbers. Okay.
So the only adjustments thus far to our elementary programing came last year with reducing a section, going to six sections total for first grade and second grade. Those are the only adjustments we've made.
Right.
So with, with the shift last fall, we went down one section each in first grade and second grade.
The next, uh, the next bit of information has to do with expenditures, but I, you guys have any, any, um, comments, any questions on the demographic data? You all come speaks for itself.
Looks like it's declining.
Enrollment declines, enrollment equals funding, so here we go.
Which speaks to the point kind of of ending a previous conversation, right, starting this one is we've made some small adjustments, but we've, um, in some committee meetings, had some conversations about what our desired class sizes. How do we get to those? These numbers will help us determine. Once we determine what those class size, desired class sizes are, then we can use these projections to help us know when we're going to need to make some more substantial cuts. It's coming, right? There's nothing in here that, I don't know that there's any silver lining already. Um, large plant or business that's coming to town that I'm aware of. So that'll help us determine what are those base needs as we move forward? So that can help us determine some of these questions we have. Where do we need to go?
Not that, well, no, until they're told, but the, her, that sheet does show that twenty-two and twenty-three looks like we have a few more hurts that'll happen in the past.
Okay. Now, the ESA vouchers haven't really affected us too much.
No, uh, just, just a few, and, and prior to this year, it had been, uh, it had been either, um, you know, wholly trendy, uh, as an accredited school or, um, Westboro, it's another name. Um, globally now, the Christian school is accredited, yeah.
They're at, as today is the day to, the deadline to enroll for the ESA. As well, I think we have to, can't be reactive, right? So we have to start talking proactively. So we talked about in finance committee meeting about fiscal cliff and we don't want to get to the fiscal cliff, so we have to start talking about what is realistic moving forward and how do we start planning for that? So there are small changes and not any large changes that are, if we can help it, right?
Anything else on the demographic side of the incident? So then fiscally, um, the next thing that I wanted to, to share with you, just cost per pupil. This is general fund expenses on a cost per pupil basis from, from the general fund. Now, the general fund, uh, as most of you on board know, general fund is, uh, everything that's involved in the education, the dollars that are involved in the actual education of our students. So personnel is the main, uh, contributor, I guess, uh, to the general fund. A general fund, uh, in the state of Iowa uh, is eighty to eighty-five percent personnel. So that would include, uh, all staff, teachers, parent educators, custodians, administrators, uh, eighty to eighty-five percent of the general fund is personnel. And so if, really, if you're going to make any kind of a uh, a change in your general fund expenditures, uh, the only, the only significant way to do that is through personnel. So general fund, personnel, uh, utilities, instruction, anything related to instruction, books. Uh, what else, Dr. Butler? Anything, anything related to instruction?
Cover, yeah.
Yeah. So our general fund expenditures, uh, this is secondary, secondary, uh, and, and as you look at this, even bigger here. Pretty simple calculation. In twenty twenty-one, our middle school general fund expenditures totaled three million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighteen and two cents. Our served enrollment at the middle school at that time was four hundred and twenty-six students. And so the calculation is cost per pupil. Take the cost, divide it by the number of pupils, and you come up with nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Same, same, same calculation at the high school, just, that's how all of these were done. We have five million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and nine cents in general fund expenditures at the high school in, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. It's always the, the fiscal year is always the second year when you look at things like the fiscal, so that's fiscal year twenty-one. We have five hundred and sixty-seven students served at the high school for a cost per pupil of ten thousand, four seventy-three seventeen. Now, the high school, uh, generally, uh, well, not generally, high schools are always going to have, are, are going to be a bit more uh, because of the programming that's involved. Um, you've got, uh, you have foreign language program, you've got all of your CTE courses, you've got music, you've got, it's just that there's a lot more programming involved, which means there's a lot more instruction costs, uh, involved, um, at a high school. So you can see what the cost there was in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two. High school, excuse me, middle school, high school. Twenty twenty-three. Middle school, high school. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, middle school, high school. And we don't, we don't have fiscal year twenty twenty-five yet because today is the final day of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and so we'll be, uh, we're getting ready for our audit, uh, that will be coming up in the next, um, number of weeks in, or, or, you know, September, August, September. It's an independent audit, every school district is audited independently, uh, every year. And so our audit, uh, will be coming up soon. And so, but we don't have numbers yet for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
But because of the increase in teacher salaries, we can anticipate that those per pupil costs are going to be?
Generally, if, if everything else was constant, um, you know, if, if, if staff was, is constant from one year to the next, it's going to go up, um, you know, uh, you give raises, you, you know, you have contract negotiations with, uh, we, we negotiate with two, uh, two organizations, the, the Teachers Association, and then AFSME, uh, we negotiate with, with those two. So, uh, yes, that does affect costs and, and go, and costs go up. This would also, Aaron, include insurance increases in the general fund. Uh, health insurance, uh, increases, um, uh, are, are, are part of the general fund. Um, the, the one thing that you don't know that sometimes can affect is, uh, staff changes. You know, if you have someone retired who is, uh, uh, more highly compensated than, than a, you know, person that you bring in, uh, that can, that can affect all expenditures.
And what you might point out is what
We can hear.
Yeah, you're on.
What the state's giving us per pupil, but coming here is about over seventy-nine hundred.
Yeah.
For these years, it was less than half, so.
I, yep, I'm getting to it. Uh, okay. Same exercise with our elementaries. Now, Van Allen, uh, because our preschool prior to this past year, our preschool resided, for the years that we're looking at, preschool resided, um, at Van Allen. And so, uh, the, the weighting, uh, we, we add an additional, whatever that preschool, uh, uh, number of students, you divide that by, you divide it in half, uh, because you get a point five weighting for all of those students. So general fund expenditures, I'll make this bigger and just go across there. Lincoln, uh, served enrollment in, in twenty twenty-one, two hundred and thirty-eight, a cost per pupil of eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two. And, and you can just, you can see now, just Lincoln. Squeeze that down just a bit. Lincoln, Van Allen. Lincoln, Van Allen, Salem, Harlan.
One thing to note that shared staff is allocated based on the time that they spend at each school. So, and our teacher that's shared between buildings is a point four or a point five, and their salary is divided up between the buildings that they serve.
That is correct. So then I just, what I did was I took the average cost per pupil in Mount Pleasant, the cost per pupil at Salem, and then the percentage difference. Same exercise all the way down. Just took the average each year. And then at the very bottom, the total for the year, excuse me, for, for the four-year period, the averages. And the average cost per pupil, the elementaries, and Salem, and then the difference in percentage. Questions on that?
So, John, you were able to get the cost, or Jessica was able to get the cost per building based on what was coded? Just personnel, you know, the percentage in each building, first off, but what's been coded in each building?
Yes, um, as some regulations a few years back, might be five years by now, we are required to code all expenses per building. Um, there are some things like transportation, that it's just a district code, so it's not a per building. But, um, what he's shown is everything from personnel to supplies to custodial, um, but yeah, they're, they're pretty honed in, so.
And then, so the next document, uh, Melinda, uh, what we were, discovered, what you had brought up, is you're right on the money. So here's, what I, what I did with this is our certified enrollment, certified, not served. Certified, because that's what generates the funding. Our certified enrollment last October, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. The per pupil funding this year, this coming school year, fiscal year twenty-six, we will be, tomorrow we will start fiscal year twenty-six. So the per pupil funding in fiscal year twenty-six is seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars per pupil. That's, that's, that's called a regu, that's called the regular per pupil amount. And you just simply take the number of students times the per pupil amount that you get, okay? There is a figure that's called combined district dollars or combined district cost. And, and that takes into account weighted students, uh, special education students, ELL students, there is a combined district cost. This is just a regular program dollars. So you can see our regular program dollars in fiscal year twenty-six are just over fourteen million dollars, fourteen million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. So you can see our regular program dollars in fiscal year twenty-six are just over fourteen million dollars, fourteen million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. So, if you use the enrollment projections and the per year SS, and, and a per year SSA increase of two percent. So what I did is I took seven, seventy-nine, eighty-eight, did two percent of that, added it to the seventy-nine, eighty-eight, and, and got the next figure, and then I did that for, for more years. So I was adding it on each time and increasing it by two percent, 'cause that's about what we've gotten the last number of years. So using the enrollment projections and a per year SSA increase of two percent. The projection in twenty-nine thirty was a certified enrollment of one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three. So then, if you take that state dollars per pupil, increase of two percent each year, eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, and you do the, the multiplication on that, the regular program dollars is thirteen million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. And that's a difference to the negative of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Simply based on enrollment and, and the SSA, you know, the SSA is going up, but it, it doesn't keep pace with the projections. Now, I, again, you know, will we beat the projections? That'd be great. Uh, that's not the trend that we have seen. So my, you know, it's, it's, uh, we, we, we have to look at, we have to look at, um, we have to look down the road, uh, and how, how we maintain, uh, the program that we, or how we, how we, you know, what the program we offer our kids looks like, um, in the near future. Based on data.
As we continue to, any type of future planning, obviously, three-to-five-year plan, anything after that, leading up to that, we probably didn't take all of this data into account as we started master planning, and we, we definitely need to, right? So as we're resetting, looking at our current program, and looking at how we adequately educate all of our students, what do we need to be looking at? What are our next steps? What things do we need to be, class size, section numbers? Of those section numbers, how many attendance centers are needed, how many staff members are needed, right? And we have to be somewhat proactive rather than reactive, right? So it's really what are the next steps? I mean, we could disagree with the data. I don't think we're gonna, anybody's gonna disagree with the negative trend, so we have to be prepared for some kind of continued decline. So how do we, how do we plan for continued decline, whether it's two hundred and thirty students, or it's a hundred and eighty students, or a hundred students, it's still significant, right? So how do we put plans in place so we're keeping up with it and we don't have to to make some tough decisions? There's no easy decisions, right? It's not a fun place to be in, but we have to start talking about what we need to give our kids, what we want to give our kids, the best education we can give our kids. What does that look like?
Right, this isn't fun, this isn't easy to talk about, since I've been on the board, I've, I've had my fingers crossed, you know, that the enrollment, we would get back up. And instead of, you know, not looking at the data, you know, that's what, what we are doing right now is, is looking at the long-term data. It, it's not based on, you know, open enrollment out, you know, right now, we're pretty well even as far as open enrollment goes for our students served, which, which is nice. Again, that's where we wanna keep it at, stick, as, if we can stay positive with that, stay positive with the whole district, um, we're still gonna have tough choices to make, but i- it's just hard.
Well, looking at class sizes, we have part of the equation here, which is incomes. Obviously, we didn't do a projection for five years down the road as to what our potential expenses are. Most of that makes salaries, I would assume. Is there any, any figures we can put onto size of classes five years down the road, what we need to be at, or given this data, to make that classroom feasible financially? If I'm making any sense? And you asked the question as to what we as a district wanna see as class sizes.
You want as small as possible, right? But what can you afford?
Can we put a number to that? Can we say that, you know, I want a number of sixteen or seventeen, but that doesn't make it financially feasible? Do we have to be at the twenty, the twenty-two? Do we have to be at twenty-five? That's, that's kinda where I'm thinking, not, not those numbers, I, I don't know.
Right.
That's just kinda where I'm going, we wanna throw numbers out, that's what we want our class sizes to be.
What is the cost of those numbers?
Yes.
I, I think that we need to get these numbers out to the public as much as we can. Because I, I, I tend to be optimistic, but I, this demographics surprised me, I mean, I, I, this, this is well worth it. And I think we need to get the numbers, the information out to the public as much as possible, to let them know what the trend is. I mean, people know what the trend is, but they don't, they don't understand it. And we have to be, and we have to go on and think what we can do best for all of our kids in the Mount Pleasant Community School District. It's not one or two, it's the whole kit and kaboom, and our staff. They have to be looked at. They have to be educated on these numbers too. 'Cause I think you need to start in-house, and then spread out, but I think we get, we need to get these numbers. Now, I, John, I thank you for getting this put together, 'cause I, I, I think this is very beneficial, I think it's very eye-opening. And it's, it's gonna be tough to do, to make some decisions, but, uh, we can do, we can get through this. We can get through this, and be positive, and do the best that we can for all of our students and staff.
And there's a couple of unpredicted challenges that the next year could show us even more hardships. You know, not to pile on the bad news, but, you know, this past legislative session, we watched it come particularly close to opening up ESA dollars to homeschooling. We did see a change in homeschooling rules to where people are now able to instruct children who are not their home, um, under one homeschool unit. We also saw a discussion in property tax reform, when they were discussing the budget. One proposed action that obviously didn't pass this year, but many expected to come back and discussion next year, was taking away the individual school district's ability to levy property taxes. Any property tax revenue that a district would make would go back to the state, and the state would determine how much that district gets of that revenue. Now, they claim now that it would be the same as what you would get if you were deciding, but as we see decreasing trends in SSA, we know that to be, you know, livable at best. We know that we're coming up on a two-year budget deficit, um, that the legislature is leaving the entire state in. Knowing that public education is forty-two percent of the state budget, that's concerning. So on top of decreasing enrollment, on top of SSA not keeping up with inflation rate, proposed gigantic changes to property tax ability of the local school districts, not just an overall deficit in budget. You know, what does this mean? I, I, I don't know, other than the fact that we just have to bat in the hatches and, and, you know, play some cover defense for a couple of years to see where things pan out, so, um, I know I'm not adding any solutions, but the discussion needs to be broader than just our district, unfortunately. Uh, we're seeing this in districts across the state, I mean, you showed us some good statewide, uh, data, but we're seeing larger school districts like Lenmar, um, having to cut eleven million dollars from their budget. We're watching that, uh, happen in Cedar Rapids, we're watching, um, Burlington close an elementary building. You know, it, it, we're not unique in this in the Mount Pleasant School District, so I guess, you know, on top of getting out the data to the public, um, I've been doing my best to advocate to, you know, broaden the view that people have on the challenges that public education is facing, where it's not just a district level concern, it's not just a concern of this board, it's a concern of everyone, and it, it reaches far beyond just our community. So I don't mean to be a, you know, just a lot of bad news, but this is a pretty broad and complex challenge that we're facing in the next five years.
I think you have to look at section numbers on, on total enrollment, or, you know, per grade level, and you have to look at attendance centers, you have to.
And I think that goes back to the discussion earlier of knowing we have three million dollars. How do we divide that out, or where does it need to go to, knowing that what the needs are going to look like, so what do those needs look like in the next two, three, four, five years? And then, what? How do we allocate and spend that money best? And I don't think we can do that right now, right?
And when we talk about that financial cliff, you know, trying to do small changes in order to avoid a giant drop-off, you know, that's something that I have been thinking a lot about and struggled with, because when we're talking about changes in attendance center numbers, inevitably, you've got people that just can't make that work, whether it be for just, you know, approval of that decision, or transportation, um, needs. So, when we're talking about protecting enrollment, hard discussions like that also affect families leaving the district. So, I've had a very hard time planning for that cliff, and I, I wanna avoid it, but I also wanna protect the things we have going well for us now, to not lose additional numbers just off of decisions that we make, and I, I know it's unavoidable at a certain extent, um, but again, just trying to take all factors into consideration.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll say it again, in my experience, we have to, we, we have to look at the number of sections that we're gonna offer at, at the elementary grade levels, and we have to look at the number of attendance centers that we're, that we are operating. I, I don't see, um, I don't see any way around that.
And likewise, with that, how do we make, how do we make sure that we're reducing secondary costs as well, right? So we're not, those dollars have to come from other, everywhere, right? So, as we're adjusting, as we need to adjust section numbers, how do we ensure that that happens as I follow through, right? If we were offering eight sections of English for ninth graders?
Yeah.
Where does it go to?
No, I-
So we have to follow all of those things.
I, I agree with that, I agree with that, we looked hard at that, um, uh, and, and with these numbers, we're, we're very close to that, you know, and, and in terms of, I mean, you just said, how, how many physical science sections do we need? How many Algebra I sections do we need? You know, those, those, uh, uh, those are definitely part of the discussion.
And we have reduced staff at the secondary level, not extremely recently, not every single year by any means, but we didn't hire back a science position at the high school a couple of years ago. Uh, the middle school had a redistribution in around twenty fifteen, um, so yeah, th- those things have, have been happening. Uh, basically, eight, eight thousand dollars for the SSA, eight thousand dollars per, per pupil. And every ten students we lose, that, that's eighty thousand dollars, and that's, that's about what it costs to, you know, employ a teacher.
So what are other revenue streams? Because obviously, our general fund costs are higher than, than what we're getting, right? So, can we assume if we can keep ours cost per pupil the same we would, or we have to lower our cost per pupil? Like, that eight hundred thousand dollars, does that mean?
It'll have to be for property taxes, is that where you're going from?
Obviously, we should be, we're doing some things, right, right? Because we're financially healthy. We're spending more than, uh, per pupil that we get from the state. So with our other revenue streams, we're obviously spending appropriately to give our students more than the state's giving us. So what is that? We're not necessarily targeting eighty-six, forty-seven, because we're already spending, you know, upwards of ninety-six hundred percent. Does that make sense? It makes sense, it's just, it can't go on forever, right? So you, you have to be fiscally responsible. And when you see this, and, and enrollment has, has the demographics, then that's great, but when, when the state gives you seven, eight hundred dollars per pupil, and you see that you're spending eighty-six, that's okay for a year to, but you've gotta, you've gotta rein it in sometime, or else you're gonna be slapped in the base, and then all of a sudden, I'll be coming to you guys saying, hey, we need to cut a million dollars. And that's not unheard of, I mean, it happens to neighboring schools, and it's just not a position that you wanna put yourself in, so, um.
Do we know the trend? How long we've been above that?
I don't know, I can't make sure right now, but, um.
And are other school mothers have the same issue?
You guys are in a, a very good position financially, um, it's just that you wanna stay there, you know, you want to be able to continue to provide the level of education to your students that you are right now, but with, I don't wanna say declining enrollment, because we're actually up this year, but with, you know, the trend going down over decades, you can't continue to spend like this and not be hit with a, hey, guys, by the way, um, we need to cut even half a million dollars, it's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt somewhere, and my job, what I like to do is, I like to, when we're looking at expenses, is- is try to keep it as far away from the students as possible can. I don't know, an example, just a couple of months ago, I was talking to Brandon about fax machines. We have so many fax machines in the district, and we're paying thirty dollars a line, but we don't use fax machines anymore. I mean, it's just little things, but then when you see stuff like this, you've gotta start tackling the big things, or else it's just gonna kind of be a whammy all at once. And that's just not a position that anybody wants to be in.
Couple of things, just for perspective, again. If, if, if it were the worst-case scenario, in, in, in twenty-nine, thirty, fifteen hundred to twenty-three students, so again, over, over a generation's worth of time, that's, that, uh, thirty-year period, served enrollment, uh, cer- excuse me, certified enrollment, because this is a certified projection, certified enrollment was just under twenty-two hundred students. And now, you know, a generation later, and I was talking to someone about this, you know, it's, it's not, we, we, we're, we're seeing the, a huge shift in demographics as a nation, you know, the, the, the end of the, the, uh, the baby boomers leaving the workforce and, you know, we're just seeing big demographic shifts. So a generation ago, we were serving almost twenty-two hundred students in, in the same, uh, format that we are right now, seven attendance centers. And so to think that we can continue to operate like that with, you know, a seven-hundred-student difference is, it's just not, it's just not possible. The, well, the other thing I was gonna mention is, there are, there are other, uh, there are other financial factors that are, that are a per pupil amount, and, and one of the big ones is the, is the penny sales tax. That is a per pupil amount. Now fortunately, uh, the state's spending, uh, uh, the, you know, the amount of money that's spent, the, the amount of money that's accumulated with the penny has gone up each year, and, and it has offset any decline in enrollment. But that changes as well, that's a per pupil amount. TSS is a per pupil amount. Teacher leadership is a per pupil amount. And so, uh, uh, all of those, all of those are based on your enrollment.
Currently, we have six teachers per section in Mount Pleasant, except for the third grade. We have five, is that correct?
Second and third for next year.
For next year, second and third have five. So they all have one for every section.
Correct. It goes to the conversation about section sizes. What can we afford? What do we want, and what can we afford long term to sustain?
We're kind of saying what we have isn't sustainable currently.
I don't know, if you're figuring it costs us between a little over ten thousand dollars or around ten thousand dollars, we're only getting less than eight. So now, I mean-
So one of the guiding questions of the master planning process was the decline in enrollment in the last, last generation, just like John said. So how do we, wanna maintain status quo, and how long can we maintain that status quo? That was why, one reason the master planning process identified two new elementary attendance centers was to increase the, the operational efficiency of, of the district. So just like John has said, you have attendance centers. If we could have a law, you know, referendum that would pass to go down to two attendance centers, that would increase efficiency, it would put the, the building costs on, on the taxpayers, or the property taxpayers, and, and help us, help the school, help the kids with these, you know, financial issues.
Without doing any additions, do we have any combination of buildings that we could close? One, and fit all of our elementaries into three main, whatever four buildings there are?
You're asking what class size, what would class size be with limitations of?
I'm asking if we even have room, um, which I would like-
What are you, what are you willing to ask for class size of? What do we know about the other, the only other thing we haven't talked about? As Aaron was talking about, legislation is the future of preschool and full-time preschool. Did that, that stall out? There wasn't any movement on that, right, in this legislative session?
Right. Yeah, it did not pass. You know, if, again, you, you're talking about, um, if it's full-day preschool, that's full-day, if you're gonna, if you're gonna one-one-zero funding, then you're gonna serve those kids all day long. And, and so that, that then affects, this, that's, uh, becomes a facilities, you know, question. How, how do we do that?
That might be the only significant increase that you, I need to protect for is forty-ish extra preschoolers. Who knows if that'll come back up next year or not?
Well, I think we need to study this. I did this, that recommendation, I mean, study, we need to, like Josh was saying, look at the, the total numbers in our elementaries right now, add in, you have the data that would be coming up, and continue to study.
I think the conversation around class size desired and supporting class size come into, you know, is there a difference between eighteen and twenty to twenty-four, right? So what information can we gather on, you know, is, is twenty to twenty-three, is there a significant difference, or on a teacher and instruction? Does that change that go until you hit twenty-five? Where, what data or information can we find out about that? And then how does that lead into the funding that we have? Can we sustain twenty-two? Can we sustain twenty? Wishful thinking says we can sustain seventeen or eighteen, but I'm beginning to think that's-
The, the baptism of the, seventeen or eighteen, you're, you're above twenty at this point. Twenty one's below us, the, the numbers that we have are twenty-five to sixty.
Right, right now, we average about twenty-one per class, between nineteen and twenty-one.
And of course, I think we need to cut potentially. Every section we have had us at an easy one person cut in each section, and that's anywhere from twenty-one to twenty-four in a class, so.
Will be interested to see the, what the, the elementary costs are after the end of this fiscal year, since we did cut two sections. What did that do to the numbers? Was that, did we go far enough? Probably not, right? But we could, we should be able to see what the, the difference in section reduction was. What other information do we need? Are there anything else you were looking for that we haven't talked about yet? And?
The only thing I can think of, and I don't know how this would be going by, but just curious, are, um, building upkeep? You know, are we staring down the barrel at any large, um, maintenance issues that we see, you know, minus the obvious preferred additional space in each attendance center? But, you know, is there a plumbing issue coming at us in three years? Is it, you know, are HVACs running out, like we talked about on Sunday, you know, at a certain cutoff? I, again, might be hard to compile that data, but if there's anything glaringly, glaring, obvious, that's, you know, we're gonna encounter in the next five years, I think that would be pertinent as well.
Derek?
Nothing else?
Mike? Josh?
All right now.
I'd like to see us sit down and review that master planning notes, the ideas that they came forth with. After all the meeting, the research, the data they collected, we never really have discussed it as a board. I mean, I know it was never finalized, it didn't come to us for any kind of approval or vote, but have we really discussed their research and their recommendations? And where does this now go? Who decides optimal classroom size, or number of sections, or number of elementary buildings? Does it start with elementary? Does this go back to the master planning committee? Does it follow the board, board committee? What's the next step?
It really can be, um, the board would decide, desire, desire range of class sizes, right? And provide that to our district as we go forward with planning section sizes each year. I mean, we can't, as a budget, right? Part of that is in the budgeting process. So in order to continue to budget, we're gonna have to look at this again, um, before. As the budgeting planning starts in January, or April, January, February, March, that's right. So there has to be some kind of consensus that the board, um-
Right.
Yeah. In order to be, to be, to plan for next fiscal year, to, for the district to plan expenses to budget, for families to plan possible changes, because this is gonna impact everybody. Instead of getting through another year and saying, hey, we had another decline and we didn't do anything, so now we're gonna have to make a bigger adjustment. It's really, what is the next step, and how do we do that going into planning for fiscal year twenty-seven? Some of that'll depend on what kind of impact this we made in fiscal year twenty-five. But really, there are no, no changes from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six as far as section sizes. So whatever ends up with fiscal year twenty-five, that's pretty much all we're gonna have for fiscal year twenty-six, besides some staff changes, if we had some senior staff members that we turned over within our staff. We, uh, we are approaching to ours, but we did decide we would, uh, we have fifteen minutes. If there is anything from questions or information that the public would like to have more information on, that we can start looking at, and, yes, Amanda?
Um, administrative salaries, is there ever talk of raising that? Or not having that increase as much, since it's such a huge part of the budget?
Have we discussed freezing administrative salaries? No, we haven't discussed that. We provided, this last year, we provided salary increases across the board to all staff, and reasonable, I think, they all came out within a percentage of each other. So no, we haven't done that.
Yes, just a thought, if the central office was moved to the Howe Building, with the indoor track, a lot of the public has wanted to have public access to that track. If the offices were moved there and there was a secure entry, would it possibly be available to the public for their use?
Really, we've talked about that independently, wouldn't, we would still like, um, to open it up to the public. All of those measures of keying, badges, um, those kind of locks have not been, it is, we have discussed as a board, we would like it to be open regardless of if the central office was there or not.
We are moving forward on some of those, on those items, uh, keying and lock and entries and cameras. And so, uh, that is moving forward, and, and we do want to make that available.
Does I have teacher salary, you have to say, um, being considered as far as the change in the cost per student? Because I'm guessing they won't, if they did come to Mount Pleasant, they, that cost would still be there, correct?
In total, cost, cost per pupil would be calculated based on whatever staff is, whatever section sizes and staff is there. I don't know that we project turnover, and how many of people we're gonna turn over each year, and what the change in, in cost is. Yes, Kurt?
Sorry, if you guys are, if you guys looking at any other finance cuts that you could do, or more efficient ways of doing things before cutting staff?
Nope, these are our first conversations that we've had about any cost reduction containment. So these are our first looks at numbers, and what, what are they made up of? It's easiest to talk about staff, right? Because that's the largest expenditure out of that. But no, Jessica spoke to, a little bit, to the fax machine. So are there low-hanging fruit that we can tackle? They, the administrative staff does a great job at looking at that. Are there unneeded things that we're doing? So as they dig through audit and things like that come up, and so the district continues to try and do that. But yes, there are, it is more wide encompassing than just staff, we do realize that.
We've gone through twice here in Mount Pleasant in, in my tenure. Twice, we've gone through focus, uh, budget reductions, uh, where we've put, um, dollar figures on things, we've put, we've placed, there is a, there is a process where you're, where you're putting dollar figures on things, and then priorities on things, and priorities of reductions, and then coming up with a consensus. That's, that's what we, that's what we've done twice, and, and brought those, uh, brought those, uh, recommendations to the board. You mentioned, Derek, one of the things, one of, one of the things that we did ten years ago, when, when we were, uh, we were spending six to eight, six to eight hundred thousand dollars more year over year than our revenue, and our, our unspent budget authority was, was just going down, and down, and down, and down. We had to look at making, uh, reductions. So one of the, one of the things that we did was, uh, are, we, we made reductions at the middle school. We went from that, the middle school philosophy to a traditional schedule at the middle school, and, and we were able to reduce, uh, staff. to a traditional schedule at the middle school, um, and, and we were able to reduce, uh, staff. It's a, it's a very, I mean, if, if, if Mrs. Boyer, we looked at this and said, we're gonna have to cut six hundred thousand dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, that's what we would do. We'd go through a, uh, a focused budget reduction process and bring that, uh, to, to the board. And that would include everything, you know, the fax machines, you know, or what, whatever it might be, you know, uh...
General expenditures are eighty to eighty-five percent personnel.
But that's typical in any kind of business or organizations, not unique to us. Corporate personnel costs are at least eighty-five percent.
All right. More discussions to be had. Uh, I wanted to end with, the board participated in some training at the beginning of June with the administrative team, um, and we did have some follow-up, as that was one of our things that we talked about, making sure we're following up and readdressing the things that we're, um, talking about and learning about, so, um...
What do you want to go here?
Did you all have a chance to read this? So I think maybe we could go to the board section of the strategic direction. Things that we, that the whole team identified, right? Time to understand and ask questions from the doers. So those are the administration, the teachers, the principals, all of those. Spotlight success in telling their stories, which some of that we're doing, right? Over the summer as well, we continue to do. Consistently revisiting goals and progress. This is something that we all agreed we could get better on. So as we've been in, uh, committee meetings, we've been targeting, let's get an update at this, this month, then this month, and so they don't fall off the list. Stay focused on goals and district mission. Collaborate with the superintendent. Professional learning, supporting of policies. Community, the goal of that is communication of the goals, timely and reoccurrence updates, kind of what we already talked about. Trying to learn and be open to all sides. Listen to, understand. Transparency, um, across the board, so one of the things we're trying to do is provide more, more transparency in what's talked about at committee meetings for people that don't come during our regular session board meetings. Engagement and trusting the chain of command. So I think we'll keep reviewing those. Anybody have anything else, and, uh, anybody have any training they're going to attend? We're super close to achieving a, uh, board-wide goal, um, for the year. So I'll take a look at what webinars are still available, and if it applies to anybody.
Probably get your own personal webinar to get that final hour in.
Maybe we'll help you with those things. Anybody else?
I mean, with, with that training, it was just great to see the different perspectives of, you know, the board members and, and the administrators. It was a great collaboration, uh, learning time that we normally don't get.
I think the administrative participation in some of the board, other board meetings or committee meetings, especially, um, during their off, non-student contact all the time, has been really encouraging as well to get some, some more feedback and input, um, of the buildings themselves. All right. Thank you all for coming. We're going to adjourn at eight-twelve.
Well, two hours and ten minutes. The board had their work session, you got to see it all. They even allowed the public to ask questions afterwards. There were a lot of good questions, and, uh, you can tell that, uh, these folks on the Board of Education have put a lot of thought and a lot of time and a lot of effort, and they're trying to find solutions to keep the students, keep the parents, the taxpayers of, uh, Mount Pleasant Community High School, School District, and not just the high school, but the whole school district, uh, happy and educated. Thank you for watching. Thank you to my sponsors, Griner Auto Body, Car Doctor, McDonald Boneyard, Your Choice Family Restaurant, Gerling Repair, B and B Propane, and the family of Jet Stops, CWU Tree Trimming, I can't, CWU Tree Trimming LLC, say that three times fast, Dutch Market, and Coffee Talk. I'm your host, John Bain. Stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.